Okay, I hereby call this city council meeting April second, twenty 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 four. Uh to order will stand you the last word. Ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, so our rule call, we have everyone here today. So I need to add something to the agenda. Uh plan of action, it's gonna be with Martha, we're gonna add that to their action items in our ordinances. Or action items, we're gonna make that be. Plan of action.
Number ten, action items, other business.
You want other business?
Yes.
I told, oh, other business, so that will go. So it'll be other business, so it'll be letter D.
Yes.
Or our plan of action. So that's where you go.
Okay.
Alright, so we're at uh approval of minutes, city council workshop minutes, March fifth, twenty twenty four.
That's been approved.
Here we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion about those minutes for that workshop? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? City council meeting minutes, March fifth, twenty twenty four.
Again, I have some crew, move to a room, second.
Okay, you got a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, financial report.
Have your financial report in front of you um for the month ending March thirty first, twenty twenty four. There is a thought preliminary, that means I haven't had time to really, really um review it for a hundred percent completeness. Um I was finishing up our audit with our auditor this last week and yesterday and today, so most of my time was focused on that to get it in on time. Um so this is preliminary, I announced the payment with huge changes, but you'll notice that our big expenditures, of course, are in our capital pocket fund. And last month I was asked, where are we on completing that? And payment wise, for that project, we have about thirty-six percent left. Um the other construction project, which is in our uh building fund, that one is coming um is wrapping up, and that one is about twelve and a half percent remaining payment wise. And remember that five percent of the total construction project cost goes into a retainedage account, which we hold on to until we make sure they've done all the work, and then that's when it gets released to them. Um so when I say the percentage wise left to pay, that includes that five percent of the overall contract price. Our interest rates did go up a little bit on some of our accounts, um but they still anticipate that starting June, interest rates will start to come down.
Do you have any questions?
I think we were talking about that bank of E O.
Yeah.
One zero five percent. And everybody else is five point five or five point two, should we be concerned about that?
Well, and then three bank of E O's at the bottom are ten percent.
Five point one.
Point one percent.
Yeah.
Um I do have a call to uh Bank of E O, my two main contacts um are out, so I'm waiting to, I'm gonna get back into.
Find out if that's a typo or is that a reality?
Right. And they have all sorts, so just because one of the bank of E O's, that one prize, and then they do have accounts at different interest rates depending on what accounts they are, how to set them up and so forth. Um so yeah, we need to hear back.
Any other questions? Okay, hearing done, we'll go to our formal proceedings. Alright, so I'm gonna open the public hearing, the public hearing to consider the naming of Unity Loop, a proposed street within the do I say Mal- Malie?
Molly.
Molly. I spelled it Molly. Molly Manufactured Home Park is called to order. Public hearing this evening will be conducted as following, there will be a staff report, then public testimony in the following order, any testimony in support of the action, any testimony opposing the action, and any net neutral testimony. Then we'll close the public testimony after the record is closed for testimony. No other testimony will be heard from anyone unless the city council has a specific question. The city council may ask questions of staff, after which the city council will discuss the matter and make a decision. The city council may make a final decision tonight, or the matter may be continued to a time and date certain in the future. If the matter is continued, this will be the only notice of that time and the date you will receive. Testimony, if you wish to speak, please fill out a testimony form and submit it to the city clerk. I will recognize those people wishing to speak, any questions should be addressed through me. Please state both your name and address for the record when you come to the podium. As the hearing is being recorded, please keep testimony concise and to the point. Testimony should be on the action under consideration. Staff report, planning official Carla McLean will now present the staff report.
I'm not used to being here, I'm used to sitting there, this is odd. Um it's pretty straightforward, um the.
Does the mic on?
It is not working.
No, the mic is not working.
It's not working. I'll just try to talk loud, okay, can I move this a little bit then? Okay, perfect. Um several months ago, the planning commission reviewed this application for manufactured home park, its physical location is just east of the Driftwood RV Park along Wilson. Uh the planning commission reviewed it, approved it. Um and they have now come back, um they're beginning to install infrastructure, streets will be going in on top of that infrastructure. Um they're trying to work through um the process of needing to get their proper licensing to to get manufactured homes delivered at some point in the not-too-distant future, they're being ordered and purchased. And I need an address to affect all of that, so uh one of the conditions of the approval for the manufactured home park was access permits from Wilson, um excuse me, Coonsy. Coonsy at that location is still a county road, so they had to do that through the tomorrow county fallen works, they obtained those. Um we've noticed and did not hear back from dispatch, um that they didn't have any conflicts with Unity Loop. Um their request was for Unity Lane. Uh the city does not actually have an addressing ordinance, so I've been trying to figure out what standard practice has been historically. Um and road, when a road connects to it itself, again, you know, it's a loop. I have figured that much out, so um they wanted lane or something else, and I said, no, it's gonna be a loop. Um so that's kind of where we're at, we need to actually name the road. Um as I was investigating how to do this in a city, I did find out that historically, we've done it by resolution, and we should have been doing it by ordinance, so we're gonna do it right from here on out, so. That's what I have, I'm happy to answer any other questions you might have, but hopefully that kind of gives you the breadth of what I've been looking at and trying that and what's before you.
You have any questions for the staff report?
So Unity Loop is the name, is that, that's what you're saying?
Yeah, that's good, that, you know, they asked and I modified, so, yep.
Any other questions? Is there any additional correspondence be- beyond those items included in the council packet?
No.
Does anyone wish to speak in favor of the action? Does anyone wish to speak against the action? Does anyone have any neutral testimony? And since we have no testimony, we do not have a rebuttal. So the public testimony portion of the hearing is now closed. Is there any additional discussion by the city council that you would like to have? Okay. Make sure the public hearing. Alright, public comment, favorite part of our our meetings now, we've added some things. Pre-arranged presentation, we have Mara County Schools, which are important, so we're gonna start with uh Sam Boardman Elementary. We have some youngsters who are going to present to us. Our microphone isn't working, so you get to use your big voice today. Super excited, welcome.
Hello again. Uh my name is Melissa Kiefer, and I'm a teacher at Sam Boardman, and I brought some wonderful young ladies to tell you about things that are happening in our school this month.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Olivia Kirsty.
My name is Finley Parnell. We would like to tell them some things that are happening at Sam Boardman Elementary.
On April fourth, it it is school librarian day, and we have one of the best. Shout out to Miss Gallagher.
April sixth is the young entrepreneur market that is put on by our P T O. There will be items that kids from Moro County will make in summer, please come and support the youth from Moro County.
Third grade will start state O S A S testing beginning April eighth.
On Tuesday, April ninth, we will have a district map for office. Or we'll have third deep team students from third, fourth, fifth, and sixth grade competing. We will let you know how they are placed next month.
Thursday, April eighteenth is the S B E spring concert out of the this world. Five thirty P M through six thirty P M. Second and third grade students will be performing the kindergarteners. And first grade concert will be in May, we would love to see you there.
At the end of the month, on April thirtieth, we have our Buccaneers Awards Assembly. Where award will be given for school of the month, Queens Classroom Best Penny, Best Country Manners and Team Time Award.
Thank you for your time.
And you got that word entrepreneur down great, very good, yes. Okay Bella, Wendy River.
Good evening. In March, Wendy River was very productive with a school-wide art show, we had lots of families show up. Fifth graders did a very good job at completing their science state tests, and we successfully held conferences before spring break. Coming up in April, we're very excited to start our math and reading O S A S test. Students have been accommodated with snacks and goodie bags to help them be more successful in their O S A S tests. We are also planning on putting on an assembly with fun mini-games and a speech with Mr. Schiller and a community member. I hope you have a great evening and thank you for your time.
Good job. Alright, so we have a presentation today, we've been working on the the citywide motto, and we have the winner today, Ashley Coleman. Come on up. Come on up. So what we have for you is you won three hundred dollars. Okay, we have a certificate for you, but the certificate, I might have to sign it, you're gonna, you're gonna get to take this home today. Okay, I will sign that. We also have an award that's gonna be engraved on this. So probably have the logo on it that, and then we'll have um what was it, Small Town Big Dreams, right, Small Town Big Dreams, we'll have that on you, on that for you, so you will get this, okay? And we'll give that to you. And then we're gonna have some, what I think, with T-shirts, family T, family T-shirts, so let me sign this. Okay? And we'll just give you this too for your photo op, even though it's blank, but you get the whole thing, so that and here's your certificate, okay? And we're gonna take a picture. Alright, congratulations, I'll take this back. If that feels good job, thank you for participating. So mom and dad, when we get that, we'll see if we can hold it, yeah, I won't give it to you, a good job. Alright, our next presentation will be the Loop Transportation.
Good evening. Hi there. Uh I'm Ben Tiger, the transit manager for Moro County Public Transportation in the Loop. Uh this is supervisor Patrick Keely. Um I know, well, a lot of you have seen our buses running around for the last several months. It's been a lot of work going into it, a lot of uh the work that took place uh prior to my arrival, uh putting, putting this idea together, putting uh the the grants together, all that was done by my predecessor. So when I arrived, there was, there was a plan, there was a, there was an idea that there was gonna be public transit, there's gonna be public transit uh that ran uh through Boardman, it would connect with kayak public transit, which is the um Confederate Tribes uh public transit system that comes into Hermiston, it goes through Pendleton. Uh currently, it comes into Irrigan. That it would tie in with a route here in Boardman, and then we'd also have a route that went out to Hepner as well. Uh so that from both ends of the county, you could use public transit to travel around Moro County. While we're not reinventing the wheel, uh there's been some constructive thought that has really gone into being able to provide public transit in a rural setting. Uh so I'd like to give you an overview of the uh what we, what we've got this far, where we're at, and hopefully uh be able to provide some information about the transit system and what it looks like in its current state. Uh I say in its current state because transit is evolving, and as we learn more about the needs of the community, what works best for the community, and what how they're able to utilize a new public transit, then there may be some adjustments and be able to refine that and and make it even a better service. Uh so if I have a next slide, please. So some of this I've already addressed, uh you've seen the buses out and a big part of, a big part of putting this route on the road, while there's a lot of talk about it, and there's a lot of we're gonna do this, and we're gonna get here, and we're, we're moving there. Uh a lot of that was, we needed that, we needed to get the equipment, and this has been going on since before COVID, and buses got ordered, and then there was delays in the, in the pipeline, and so now we finally took delivery of everything, and then, so now it's like, okay, we need to hire drivers. So in January, we hired the first full-time drivers that have the credentials to operate this equipment. And so, once that happened, then there was like hey, where are we gonna, where are these routes gonna be? Where, we know the, the basic footprint, um if I could have the next slide.
Pat, you wanna address that one?
So when we started this out, as he said, COVID changed things, everything was different, when we first brought this map out, Boardman had doubled in the size, so when we, Ben and I come together, here's what we got. We got sent right back to the drawing board, because we, entire neighborhood of Midville sent the initial, we'll give that a minute. But like he said, we're out running times since January, we got the equipment, we got the people in the buses. We got the logo put on them, and then they're out testing the routes. Testing the routes consisted of a lot more than just putting it on paper, right? In two-dimensional world, look at a map, you can draw perfect circles, you can make everything look pretty. And then you start worrying about traffic, you start worrying about where this street's wide enough to be able to get over and get a stop, where people are gonna congregate if and when those stops exist. These are all things that we've tried to address in a two-dimensional world, and we quickly found out once we started to put the drivers out, that this is changing quickly, and that we'll get to there in a second, that this is the current iteration of what we have. And as it evolved, and moving on, we have some adjustments to get to. So we've engaged in, with numerous conversations with key stakeholders, but there are a few of them down here, this does not get anywhere close to the number of people and organizations that we have actually talked to. And once you get into a room with people, everybody has an idea of how, how it's going, and how it should be, and what works best for them, and what and we've had to, like, okay, that, all of that is yes, all of that is valid, but it doesn't work, everybody has sometimes opposing thoughts after how these things should be, so we have to take it all and put together and mash it up and smooth it out and see how it goes, and come back to the drawing board, so there's several of our partners on here, um go ahead. Just, there's just some, a few people we talked to.
So uh the determination for public, public transportation, uh is part of, is part of the state's larger plan, right, for the network, statewide network transportation. There were studies that were funded through grant dollars that um basically, they did studies of, of the cities in Moro County, they did studies of, of the population, they took a lot of the census information. Um and they, they use that information along with metrics to determine areas that could most benefit from the uh availability of public transportation. Um some of the, you know, the very basic things, how are people getting to work, right? Um are there, are there any vehicles in the household, is there one vehicle in the household, how many people in the household work, how many people need to get to work? So they took that information and they compiled it, and these, these reports are available, they're available online on uh on our website, if you're really interested in, in digging down and, and reading those reports, uh but they are available. But what they determined is that there's a lot of areas, especially with the growth that Boardman is experiencing, that would benefit from having public transit available. With that being said, and how do you, how do you bring that? One of the things Pat addressed is when we took the original maps and where the, where the original routes were intended to run, uh we looked at it and we overlaid that map with the current map of the city. And there was a very large portion of the, of the residential areas and, and the city that weren't there on the original map, and that was the original footprint of the route. And as you can see, um in the next slide coming up, the route literally doubled in size. Um there's a basically, see that would be the south side of the Freeway. Um so that's, this is the current footprint of the route right here. And it stopped there, and we've included this much larger section here, and as you can see, it expands further to the east as well to accommodate the growth that's been experienced in the, in the port area and, and the facilities uh out there. So in an effort to make it accom- make it accommodating to be useful to people that are, that are going to work, that need to do daily tasks in, in their daily lives, um putting those timetables together took a lot of effort, it took a lot of work, there was a lot of let's try this, and then coming back, because like Pat said, when you put it together in a two-dimensional world, the computer's great, and it puts all this information together, and it's like, oh, that should work. It does, until you take it out there and you put it in a bus with a driver, and they bring it back and say that's not even close, and it's like, oh, okay, go back with a snow pad, and just write down when you can get there, and we'll work backwards from there, so um all the technology in the world's great until you put it into real time, and then we, we dialed it down, and this is what we've come up with um from working through that, all of these maps, all these route times, timetable stops, they're all available on uh the, the website for the Loop. Um Pat was passing out these, the cards here, they have a Q R code on them, uh that will take you to the website, it will also give you the most up-to-date, we, if there's any changes that happen with any of our, any of our routes, any of our um information, we're updating there first. Um one of the reasons we chose to go with the Q R code is, once you print materials, it's in print, and there it is, and if it it's an update, then that doesn't get the update, so we did opt to go with the Q R code, so that you could have the most up-to-date at any time available to you, because that'll be the first, because it is updated. Um moving along to the
We'll probably come back and forth between these and we get there.
You wanna go ahead and?
So, the way our route system is set up is essentially a skeletal frame for what we're hoping to build upon as we figure out what's working, and we build out more and more routes, right, so our current iteration is, is nine total trips, we'll call it, right? We start out first thing in the morning in Hepner. It picks up Ione, Lexington, then comes in and does one full loop around Boardman before the idea being, getting both the work out of the plants and out there, so anyone in the county can now access labor out of the plant and have their fat and a glass of shit. From there, we do another lap around Boardman. We come south, this is the blue route I'm talking about now, comes south, goes again into Ione, Lexington, and accesses all of the county facilities, courts, all the county offices. In Hepner, we tried really hard to get them there by nine o'clock. I think currently, just scroll back up to the blue, I don't wanna misquote myself on the record here. I think the soon, on up to the blue, there we go, yeah, the soonest we can get in there is nine thirteen. So our routes initially were based on a forty-five minute loop, running every hour, that's kind of our ideal circumstance. Of course, in realizing drive time and how to get to and from, turn around out of the port and get back, and make sure we got the new neighborhoods. We're realizing maybe that's a bit of a stretch on the dream sort of things, but for right now, we're making things work in the timing. So we've got everybody now to work out here or back to the courthouse at nine thirteen, if you go back to the green for me. From there, the bus turns back around. And it takes, they definitely take their lunch break an hour later. We leave the courthouse and the hospital and all that again about an hour later, so that if you have any business to take care of, that's generally enough time. Comes back and that bus will then go around Boardman, that's with the red route here, we'll get there in a second. Little while later, I think it's about an hour later, just scroll back up here, the second bus starts again in Hepner and brings anybody who's coming after lunch, right, so when the court breaks for lunch, folks can get home from there. Um we recognize that there's the potential for some time conflict, and that maybe some folks aren't getting back to court, but until we see those numbers and we can figure those things out, we're just kind of shooting in the dark and, and seeing what's gonna work, right, we need to have some, some people in some seats to get that data to see what the best use of our equipment is, maybe this is gonna be a later start, maybe we don't know how that looks yet. Uh if you go on to the red sheet, again, at the end of the day, the blue goes one last time, starting at seven o'clock. Seven fifteen, I think, is the official time we're leaving, but anybody who's got to work at the port can finish their twelve-hour shift and get home all the way to South County, so we've got the port covered, we understand that there are some times in between there, and the majority of those folks will be able to ride this red route home in thirty-nine times. The red route consists of a consistent loop, all going in the same direction, taking everybody from work, or from around the town, taking them out to the port, dropping them off, see, we're, we're starting here um by the post office, coming around. I don't remember now, which, all the loops are the same direction, and then it comes out and drops off for, or coming back out. The only time it's one consistent total loop is right here in the center, everything else is kind of one-way, as we look at our pickup, we've got some changes. Because of the consistency of this changing, um we'll see at the bottom of this, I think we've done the eighteenth, that's when we decided this is what they are, this is what we're gonna go with. Because of the fact that they're changing all the time, and we can literally change them daily based on, I need to ride from Ione at this time, and I need to ride from two. Okay, we're gonna run this through this quarter. We're gonna start looking at some changes in May, hopefully have some, some data to base those changes on. And then we can come out in June, make those changes, announce them, and that way, these are as consistent and timely as possible and give as much chance to succeed and as much valid data as we can get as, as we're increasing our ridership. So, one of the keys So one of the keys that we'll get to here in a bit. We are struggling with, with ourselves and trying to. For us, trying to speak is every day between ourselves going, trying to get this information to the public. Requires a lot of one-on-one question and answer. People come and they have a million questions, all of which are valid, all of which are things that we've either considered. Overconsidered or didn't consider because we are beyond that. That being said, for us to throw information out like we're doing now. People get pieces of it and then it just builds more questions and we want to encourage them to ask those questions, we'll get to that. This explains the seven AM to the port. All the routes include a trip around Boardman to include those. If you look at the map. Struggle with this portion here, right in front of schools. Two parts, one, we, we're not competing with to and from school routes, we, we don't do that. And this allows us consistent timing by not being involved with that traffic to and from school. We're so, you may have to walk out one way to get there, but that's better than the alternative at this point, trying to wrap ties. This points out that starting at seven fifteen, all of our routes, this is going to start again at the port, give everybody a ride home at the end of the day. So hopefully, everybody you've got somewhere can get a ride back.
That's the big, the big thing that we've been trying to push out, right? It's not perfect, it does exist and it, and it is operating and, and it is working. Our job at this point is to collect that, take that data and continually to improve this service so that. It is refined and continues to better meet the needs of the, of the communities that we serve. One of the other things that this slide presentation does not point out is that the service is fare free. That's made possible because it's all, it's grant funded, it's, it's the tax dollars. Of everyone at work and that's what makes this possible, right? There are federal grants, there are state grants, there are ODAT. That's what pays for the operating expenses, that's what pays for the equipment. And that's how the service is provided. So when you get on a bus, there's, there's no, there's no fare. There's no charter route, it's the same with kayak, kayak operates fare free as well. So once that connection that I was talking about happens and they're, they're looking at late. Later into the fourth quarter is when they're thinking that their equipment is going to be on the road and they're going to be coming in. You'll be able to travel in a, in a, in a larger portion of, of Eastern Oregon. Using public transit and, and that's the goal, right, is to be able to, be able to move around and, and to utilize the, the public transit, so. Where we are today, this bus is running and there's, there's drivers behind the wheel and you can travel around Moro County.
So going back to, right now, we can work out is a key portion of what we're doing. We're asking anybody to, we gave yours the flyer, we're going to leave them around, we're going to see them pop in other businesses and we can get them distributed. Anybody that had any questions, reach out to us at the loop at. Then Ben and I, we're. Willing and able to answer whatever questions we can. If you subject line add me, you'll be included in all of our releases. As, as we make changes, we've got a compiled list. We're going to send those out to people so that you've got the most updated information, right? You don't have to go searching for it and that. These papers we printed off last week, it may not be accurate, you'll be advised that, hey, that was not actually my own printing material. This is just what we've done so far, right, on March eighteenth, we published online the maps. We turned around and gave access to all of our employees, to the county employees, through, through our email network. That served us in two ways, one, it got additional eyes on to that information, I don't know how many. Other folks have written something or, you get wind of your own errors, you, you stop seeing those things, allow us to see some of those things coming back, we're going to make some of those changes. And some of them we're aware of and rather than updating. Got keynotes for when we do make that update, like some spelling of burries, I think. Some other things that just got missed and we can make those corrections, right? It also got that information into the hand for the people who were going to be asked these questions, right? Like, hey, what, what's going on with the loop, what's going? Our employees, we want to make sure they have that information so that when they're out driving and people start seeing this. They would quickly get that information, right? On the twentieth, it's not on the twenty, we made the official app and we sent that out to everyone. Hopefully you guys were all able to receive that either from us directly or it was forwarded to you by someone who was on that list. And again, if you're not on that list and you want to be, that's the loop, subject line add me. So you guys would help us when we pass this forward, anybody that needs that information, doesn't have it. You can have them reach out to us through that, add me or feel free to forward whatever we have. All is available on the website, as Ben said, we've been over that, this QR code will take you directly to that. We have it available front and back with these cards, English and Spanish. We now have a Spanish speaking disappur, so we can reach out and speak to more of our community and we can get more people right. The one thing that Ben and I hear consistently across the board, I didn't know the loop did that. I didn't know the loop would give me a ride to X, Y, Z. We are trying to get the word out, the loop as a whole, both our demand response and our fixed route service now. Is fare free. Our fixed route system, we can deviate up to three quarters of a mile. If you have an ADA accessibility issue, you don't have to make it to a bus stop, that's not close to you. All of our fixed route services, ADA compliant, we can deviate up to three quarters of a mile, pick you up. And get you back, if you deviate up to three quarters of a mile, to get you to where you need to be. On top of that, we still have our fixed route service that is open to all citizens of Moro County. Anybody in the Moro County can take it for anything you can get, I, I use, anything you get an appointment for, right? So while we may not be able to take you down to get you milked now on that service. If you know you're going to be milked next Tuesday, give us a call, see what we can do to get that right scheduled, right? And that is door, curb to curb, not door to door, it's curb to curb. You have to make this out so we can get you to and from and get you a dog. Last part of this started for us yesterday, we had our ribbon cutting, thank you to everyone who was able to make it out to that. And thanks for those of you who are willing and able to now take the information and spread the word for us. Anybody who was at the deal yesterday was able to get some photos, we'd love to get those back, we're trying to put together more. Media presence, right, trying to use the county's Facebook page, trying to update our website, trying to get more things pushed out for people to become aware of us. So anything you can share would be great. Here's some photos from what we were able to gather yesterday. These are some of our employees, it's Ben and I, Audrey's back there in the shadows driving. We've got Marissa, we've got Colleen and Bacon the Cow joined us. Here is myself, Commissioner Sykes, Ben. Left to right, myself, Commissioner. Dieter, Sheriff Foles, he's able to join us at both the Hepner. And Boardman one, Mr. Keever's there, Commissioners. Aaron Palmquist from the City of Girigan, he's all part of the Biden board and Ben. Bacon the Cow out there getting the word out and we're up and moving. And I, this picture got on there twice. There's your own Carla, made it up, she's out in the south. Bacon, Ben, this gentleman there was there, he's Eric from Kayak. I don't know if you guys got an opportunity to talk to him, he's there and helping inform people as to what their fortune is and when that's coming in. These are our equipments, we've got a thirty-two passenger bus. This one we're primarily using that first early morning route, trying to get everybody that needs to get to work on there. We expect that to be our biggest. Ride load, all those folks that need to get to work out there early in the morning from there. These smaller buses, these are fourteen passenger buses, make the more trips. And they're a little more efficient and we're hoping that between the two, we can get everybody out there and then as they trickle out of work, we'll be home from there. This is our Hepner picture, myself, Sheriff Foles, Mr. Sykes, Judge Beal, Matt and Ben. Bacon with test and I're putting them all there down there. Again, any photos you have of Bacon, our bosses, our drivers, our vans, anything around town, please feel free to share those with us. So that we can hopefully use that opportunity to get the word out, let people know, we're always available for those, I think.
Thank you for allowing us to come and, and present the information about the loop, picture on service. Like Pat said, if there's any questions, please reach out to us, email us, let us know. Be more than happy to answer them, if we don't have an answer right then, we'd be more than happy to look for those answers to get them to you. So again, thank you so much for your time, we appreciate it.
Absolutely, thank you.
What's super cool about this is I remember when the, the loop was an idea. And it's, and where it's gone, which is super, that's super awesome about what our county is doing. To be able to, I mean, there's not very many places that I've seen where we can connect our whole county. And I, I mean, this is just another thing on how neat our county is and what our leadership is trying to do. And with the people that they have, like you guys and some other individuals. And tying it into, well, I guess we're going to try to tie it into Yuma-Tilla County as well. So that's where kayak will be the, be the connecting piece, right? It currently comes to Girigan and, and. As of yesterday, the plan is fourth quarter, so they're thinking sometime in June. They will be making that connection to Boardman, so from there. You'll be able to travel back to Hermiston, Pendleton, all the places far as Luke Grant.
So through different agencies, we've heard Wala Wala. I don't really think quite as far as Spokane yet, or if that's our plan, into Enterprise, Elgin. Ontario, and I believe that Ontario is working on connecting it to Boise, which is.
So it's, it's, it's growing that.
Yeah, yeah, all of us are growing that one.
Again, thank you so much, we appreciate you.
Thank you.
And we're very excited, so we'd love to have you come out and ride with us sometime. Thank you again. All right, is there anybody who wishes to do public comment? We'll just move right along. All right, we'll move to act and items ordinance. Or this three dash twenty twenty four, naming unity loop. And Molly manufactured home park.
Well, I'm going to approve the meeting by title only, ordinance number three dash twenty twenty four, an ordinance to name. The proposed street within the Molly manufactured home park within the city of Oregon.
I'll second.
And we vote on this, right?
Staff member needs to read the title.
Oh, a staff member needs to read, okay.
Yes, we vote on the motion.
We vote on the motion and then?
Then we read and then we vote to approve or not.
Okay, so all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, go ahead and read.
Okay, ordinance number three dash two zero two four. An ordinance to name the proposed street within the Molly manufactured home park within the city of Boardman.
So then I'd like to move to adopt ordinance number three dash twenty twenty four, an ordinance to name the proposed street. Within the Molly manufactured home park within the city of Oregon.
A second, Ben.
Okay, got a motion in a second, all in favor say aye, aye, any opposed?
Thank you.
You bet, so we got that. And action item resolution, resolution eight dash twenty twenty four. Searchless property declaration, two thousand sixteen Ford interceptors.
Yeah, this should be two, two thousand sixteen Ford interceptors, currently they're being replaced. I just talked to the leader who was updating them. The first one was started last Friday, so hopefully we will have the replacements for those within. A couple of weeks, we had to strip out the parts, the radios and radars, camera system out of them, just put into the new cars, so we're parked in the back now. We've seen our used parts a lot that we have not figured out. So, you know, and we do have Vanessa is wanting to purchase both of them from us, so.
Nice. Well, then I move to approve resolution eight dash twenty twenty four, resolution declaring city of Boardman public property has acts as excess.
I'll second that.
All in favor say aye, aye, any opposed?
Thank you very much.
Resolution nine twenty twenty four, credits three boundary expansion.
Oh, I'm not, okay, sorry. So we got an email a while back indicating that, oops, we do have another action to take. On the enterprise own boundary expansion. With creds three, it offers a little bit different than creds two did, creds three is a collaboration between the port and the county. And the city is added as kind of the third wheel. But because we have entered into the IGA with the, the two sponsoring entities. When there is a boundary expansion, we also have to offer ourselves. So the boundary expansion was for properties predominantly within the Boardman city limits and would be within the Boardman influence area. A number of them are future hotel sites. We have no fewer than four people who are talking to us currently about hotels or hotel, five, if we add hotel expansions, so. I'm trying to remember if there's other properties included in that, but I don't, I think it was just hotels. So the resolution before you fulfills our obligation as kind of that third wheel to creds three. And gets the process concluded so they can submit it to the, to business organ. Happy to answer any other questions to the best of my ability.
You may have any questions regarding this?
So is the rent, the expansion, is that what that is?
If you, is this the only map, it's the only map?
It says the orange is existing, that's why it was not.
Yeah, this is not a very good map, what I can tell you is.
It doesn't designate it at all.
Yeah, so the properties that I know we added. Are the hotel property right here. A hotel property proposed across the freeway. Hotel property down at the end of front near Sage, the Sage Center. And we can, we double confirm that the Best Western proposal from like five, six years ago, that all of its property was.
The expansion of the existing hotel?
Actually, it's all included, so the sleep inn is all, that whole property is already included. And they're about to come out of the program, they, they did opt-in for the three years. If they do an expansion, it would most likely, the expansion portion would most likely be eligible, so we wouldn't want to remove them, the boundary, yeah.
And they weren't in, already included in, too, then?
No, because these are all.
Parts inside the city, they weren't in, already included in that?
Right, so. Back when I was the enterprise zone manager at the county, we added the sleep inn property, we added the. River Lodge property, we added the Best Western property, but these other developments weren't.
Oh, that's right, you just can only be a certain, there's a, there's a limit of what.
Yeah, you know, it.
I see what it, what that.
It's hard to just, you know, I, I suppose we could have just said, well, we're just going to all of downtown Boardman.
But then you take too much property and you can't do that in the enterprise zone, got you, okay, I see that, okay. I knew that, thank you. I knew that, thank you.
Well, then I'd like to move to approve resolution nine dash twenty twenty four, resolution thirty, the boundary expansion of Columbia River Enterprise, so.
I second that.
Okay, we're motioning, is there any discussion on this one? All in favor say aye, aye, any opposed? All right, so we'll go to action items, other business, uh we have a planning commission vacancy, and we have a letter of interest. Mr. Jones, you guys all. Welcome, Mr. Jones.
Mayor Kiefer, I would add that we also had a letter of interest from a seemingly very pleasant woman, her name was Joy. Um but given what she told me in her email, I think she lives in Boardman, Ohio.
Oh.
And I I did reach back out to her and I attempted to confirm that she didn't live in Boardman, Oregon, and I never did hear back from her. So I do think that David is the only qualified person who's been in a letter of interest.
My students were doing a thing on Boardman, and the number of things that are similar, I think there's a more county back there.
Yes.
And uh.
Think the town is kind of similar to the size too.
It is, it's like forty four hundred people, yeah, she 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 said that in in her narrative, oh, she was, she can't live here because that hospital's not in here and this isn't here.
The police department gets calls from Boardman, Ohio, all.
Really, yeah, fire department, yeah.
Yeah.
Because we must from you Google, it must be before.
And when you look up rural county school district, you can can get the one in Ohio as well, yeah.
Very interesting.
It's a thing. Well, it's probably not like living in Paris, Texas or something.
Um I'd like to move to appoint David Jones to planning commission term ending December thirty first, twenty twenty four, it's kind of a short term. A second.
So I have a motion in a second. Any questions? Well, sorry, go ahead, was this, is it open the same now, it hasn't been for a bit, I mean, we've had a lot of interest before, like last few. And then I'll have a one, I was going to say about time, but I was saying, boys, since I'm tired, I was in car.
Yeah, I mean, we're we're recruiting in the same manner, just seem seeming to get a different response, so um when when we get to the end of the year, we'll, you know, have the usual annual replacement kind of process, we'll we'll try to hit it hard and see what happens and.
Well, I think this position was filled once already.
Yep.
An individual likely moved or stepped down, and we're filling it again, so.
Then who's seated, David Land, Landis from?
Landis from this.
Okay.
And so it's open and it expires in December of this year?
Yes. Yeah, it's just concluding the bit to the end of this term, sure.
Okay, so I have a motion in a second, any other questions? All in favor say aye, aye, any opposed? All right, congratulations, Mr. Jones.
Smiling face.
All right, the capital improvement plan.
Okay, so what you have in there, that is the um most recent draft. Um and I know this is the time to discuss, uh we did uh a community outreach, we held this as Sam Boardman, we had a showing or two. Um so thank you, Heather.
Marta and Karen. Okay, I called my mom, she can't.
So, but we did, I mean, we have, we have had input, we have had discussion. Um so yeah, now is now is the hope to to move forward, and now I'd love to hear the input, any discussion, thoughts?
I think the only input I I thought from outside of party meetings or whatever, um some people were just curious what that, what it even was. And so rather than choose to go to the meeting, they came to me and asked, well, what is this? And then I explained it to them, and then some, oh, okay, well, maybe I don't need to go to the meeting now, you know, and so I think that was, what I'm suggesting is, I think there's probably still some people that really don't understand what this is. But at the same time, it's not like we haven't given notice, plenty of notice for people, so.
Correct.
We get some backlash, like, hey, we've been doing this for a while now, and it was open to the public, so.
Yeah.
So.
Um and then the other thing that we will do, and Amanda has completed this, and as soon as we have approved this, it will go live on the website, and you will see timeframes and plans and and then once we do that, the next step is then to go and complete, to go all the things that have been completed, and we will add that to the to the, so it's it's gonna be really neat, very, like, hey, this is what we're doing, this is the year, all the proposal.
And it's gonna have all the dollar amounts and everything, projected start or.
Yeah, everything you see here.
Here will be on the website.
Except for pictures.
Right, no, the pictures are there, they're just funny, because you have to have, like, the panoramic picture, and I don't have compatible picture yet.
Yeah.
Yet.
So all of the information will be available to everyone.
Yeah.
But will people be able, like, will there be a disclosure statement that says these plans are the ones that have been approved? I think your feedback is welcome, however, it won't influence or change the plans.
No, it really, yeah, it's not like that, there there's a timeframe that would start, there's, isn't there a section that said this is ongoing now? Or is it just like active and?
It's, so they're broken down into um, I'm trying to think of the word, um like the process. So there's proposed, there's in bid process, there's um instruction, starting, so there, it kind of breaks it down in that way, but it it doesn't say, you you don't say anything.
So the public input portion already happened, that's where it should have happened with those those.
Public, but again, we review this every two years. Um and and like we have said, this is a living document, I mean, things could happen, and wow, this is going on right now, we really need to go and focus in this area. That that is the point of having a living.
Mr. Mayor.
At the public meeting, I expressed that um I was stopped that uh northeast Front Street was in the twenty five, twenty seven year or twenty six, twenty seven year part, when I consider it one of the worst streets in Boston. That Main Street is not in poor shape, it's just the fact that we want to get Main Street done and updated, just because everybody sees that as our main street.
Southeast Front Street, northeast.
Northeast.
Well, that rest of the state, sir.
Over, like, if you're gonna go up to the safety center and you'll stop and all that. That that road is in, I I was shocked that it was so far down on our list of things that were important to get a comment. And so I guess you, I just wanna make it clear that I'm going to continue to advocate for that being moved up sooner than.
I would, I would respectfully say that southeast Front Street is in worse condition.
Yes, but it's our people's work.
It's our people's work.
Life's gonna be done.
If it's been, if it would have been done, sorry, I'm gonna throw you under the bus before you ever get started. He, Mr. Jones needed to get an agreement with Amazon on some property back there, and so that held that up a year or so, it isn't that it hasn't been on our schedule or a cool, and then we hadn't set the money in sight for it. So that now is gonna be done this year right away, and it'll clean that mess up over there. And I just think that uh probably Front Street on the north side. And like you say, if we do get hotels over there, it's it's all about construction, you know, there's nothing worse than opening your business and having it so you, nobody can get to you the first year. I mean, if you want nobody to come, just say that, oh, start your business and then we'll just close the street. And let's see how how long we like that. So I think those are some of the things as the city council, we need to pursue when we're dating, when we're setting forth.
Yeah, but at the same time, North East Front Street doesn't have any any business on it either, other than halfway until the park.
That's right, and neither does Main Street.
Correct, that that's that's absolutely correct.
Yeah, so.
Other than half the side, half the street.
Well, and if you're trying to tell me that we can't figure out where to put the entrances for businesses on a blank street, it's no different here on Main Street than it would be over there. You know, I mean, we we know where Kincaid should go, and probably a little across Lance property. Up over on the other side, you're gonna know where, you know, like, hopefully, Third Street eventually comes out. And as far as setting just entrances to businesses, I think that's gonna be a thing that maybe you, maybe, maybe you have to do twice. Or maybe you do some kind of a curb situation where you kind of think you're okay, I don't know, I'm I'm not the engineer. I just wanted to just, I just wanted to put it to that I.
Well, I just know that this street out here has been on the radar for Boardman since you became city manager.
Well, and I.
And now that we have V C D A doing infra- infrastructure on northeast Front Street, that becomes more important, I don't know, that's discussion.
Well, and I came years ago when I was career ended and some kid nearly lost his leg out here and wanted a turn thing, and I didn't get, I mean, and that's been twenty years ago, yeah, no, I agree that there needs to be something done, particularly a turn lane on Main Street out here.
Oh, yeah. Instead of a stop where everybody can just drive, just everybody's on their phone.
Think you're gonna go to this grocery store.
It's true, because I was rear ended there just a year and a half ago.
Yep. So I I just wanted to, I just wanted to make a comment.
And I think it's serious, um it's a good discussion to have, especially as we decide as things come in.
Yes, and the money to be spent.
They what?
As money needs to be allocated.
Correct.
So do we have the ability to move that up the list if we need to, and then it would be a matter of, do we have the money? At that point, we're changing, was it fiscal years or whatever, allocated money or whatever? Do we have the ability to do something like that if we have to, or if we choose to?
That's why, so that's why I think we call it a a living document, because I think there's a couple of projects that moved kind of fluctuated back and forth as things are coming in. And I think that's what's cool about this, this plan, is, okay, we at least have dates on things there, but as things come in and needs change, bam, it just all of a sudden.
Yeah, and I think that's the way the old one, I mean, if you, when when they get to where they show you the old one, they're gonna see it wasn't like it didn't go down just one, two, three, four, five, it went down like, oh, this this is really a priority now, and so.
Right, so if there was all of a sudden more things that all of a sudden happened to happen on one thing, that becomes a top priority.
Correct, and then it's a matter of finding the money to pay it forward, or I got that for them.
Okay, right, because there the funding is specified for each of those projects. And reminding um Mr. Hand, that is, so is um the funding that we have for the Main Street, is there a timeframe of one that had to be done? No, well, none of it.
Nobody getting grant funding for that, so there's no, there's no.
But if that there is, I'm allowed to say, uh a major developer that will be off of South Main, South Main. Um and the timeframe falls perfectly with what we have right now. Starting construction of twenty five, of May of twenty five works perfect for what their plans are, so that is my push for South Main, the one thing about northeast Front, because I I have been working out, as you guys can see, um.
I'd ask you personally, I'm afraid I don't think all the credit for that.
So that northeast Front Street is horrible. The one thing that's unique about the northeast Front Street is it is our north urban renewal, which could tap into funds that that would be different outside of the budget.
Is that possibly why we moved it to that too, because that's probably when those funds would start becoming available?
It kind, it is kind of that, and and the fact that, again, I talked to my man at Anderson Perry, and that concept of where everything's gonna go in his mind does make it a little more challenging to do the road, where are you gonna stub out, whereas on South Main, it's like, all right, we're gonna put a stub on whatever.
Into the three streets.
Yeah, and it just makes it a little simpler.
Because it's already developed.
Correct, yes.
Well, this side is, so that side, it seems like a natural.
Yeah, even though there's a lot there, you don't know exactly.
Correct.
Having a jog in it over Wilson.
Yeah, and and the the property on northeast Front Street, we still probably have about three years, especially with the hotel um that's being discussed, that there, I mean, it's not even in the sights right now. Um the incubator building, uh the funds were released, but again, I I don't know the timeframe of that either, so as soon as those things start to go, uh we just need to have information from the assessor, which we get, when do we get that for the urban level?
October, when we're supposed to have this report.
And that's, and that will give us a good idea of how much we're gonna be able to tap into in that urban area, so.
How much, I'll speak, I will don't, yeah. I see that in the, there's no engineering and stuff, so I've forgotten, is that like a fifteen or thirty percent add on?
It's included in the cost.
Yes. Are you talking about the price?
You you it's included in that.
Yes, and these are all just estimates from Anderson Perry. There's no bids or official, um so these are just estimates to get that under the split approximately of the cost. Um so when when we get closer to actually working on this project, then we get more finite numbers for each project.
And and again, it really has been a long process, there there truly has gone a lot of discussion, like with our staff, uh talking with you guys, and I just setting it up, like, when you talk about your budget, you know, where that's coming up, and like, there you go, like, what are you guys spending your money on, it's right there. I I mean, I just love that concept, and again, I'm working on the vision, um our council vision, and I don't know how many times it came up about transparency over and over, communicating, you know, just, this is for the people, we want them to know what's going on, and to me, this is.
It's not as open as you can get.
Yeah, yeah, it is.
And straight quality.
Yep.
Does this also include the street survey?
Yeah.
Okay, so I noticed on the map that there were two places that were not included
Yeah.
in the street survey, both sides of um Kincaid were Leelock Street and that. And all of the streets inside Bayvista.
Yeah.
And I was wondering if there was.
Yes, I did, yeah, I did respond, and it really was, I I.
I did look, so.
That's okay, I um I talked to mine, it it wasn't oversight, basically, but it doesn't change like the general concept of like, it was the the evaluation study is saying, hey, these, all of these streets generally are in that yellow, and it really, the most of them are yellow, which is just a step above horrible. Um so, only if you, but that it really was just oversight.
Okay.
Yeah, it won't change the concept, I mean, southeast Front was a red, we're doing that now. Uh and northeast Front, it will eventually, South Main, most of our streets are all in yellow, which is just again, that.
So you were talking about the streets inside Bayvista?
Yeah, so the front half of the park is developed for, and city owned streets. So um and I don't think that the, I think the last time the city went in and did. An overlay on those streets was probably. In two thousand?
Yeah.
So the city of Boardman owns the streets in Villavista?
Up to about halfway.
The to the speed.
Because it was undeveloped for a long time, probably.
Because.
When I was a kid, there was nothing back there.
Sure, but I, when I, what I've heard. Um, is that at some point, one of the owners of Villavista had it, um.
Surveyed and surveyed, planted, and the roads were dedicated on the.
And they, there's some rumor that the whole thing was surveyed and planted, but there's only information in record for the front half of the park. And the city at some point around that same time adopted that, but the city council took it on. I don't know.
That might have been during Hollinsburg, when Hollins.
Probably Hollinsburg, I would guess, but I don't know.
I, I, I mean, since he was mayor and was the owner, yeah.
And he was the owner of the park, yep, no, I could really get it.
I could have been before that, if it's an act, I don't know.
And I know the city is working to to do the all of the streets, correct, we're working on a plan to get them all. Within the city, didn't we talk about that? Yeah.
So if there's.
Well, if it wasn't just Leilock, I mean, it wasn't just Villavista, it's also Leilock, what side is it Leilock?
And it was oversight.
This might be going a little deep, but if there's city streets, can the city determine who parks where on the city streets?
Do you have an ordinance?
I'm just saying.
Well, I'm just asking.
We could easily make one.
I don't blame you.
I'm just saying, I'm just addressing the issue of, if there's a city-owned street. Then we kind of have say on who can park and where they can park.
Absolutely, I think the parking problem is in the park, the park, so.
On what?
The parking problem in Villavista is not in the front half of the park, it's in the back of the park.
It's like starting in the middle and back.
So I would encourage you to take a drive.
You're like, if you get one car down that road.
My truck won't make it through there very well.
It would have trouble.
And that, yeah, well, definitely, that's good.
I just, I mean, the technicals.
Yeah, yeah. I'm not for sure. Okay, that's all I have.
I would, so I care.
I move to adopt the city of Boardman capital improvement plan as presented, understanding at the time of project implementation. Final toss to each gentleman.
I'm accepting that.
Can I have a motion in a second, is there any additional discussion over this? All in favor, say aye, 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 any opposed? On to the letter of support, the broadband development deployment program.
Cool, Carl and I are both gonna speak towards this, so this basically is, uh, P D T Fast is looking to do a grant. And they, uh, are encouraged to have municipalities support. This letter is kind of going to that, even a step above like, hey. We want Boardman to be the shining star of what cities can do with broadband, correct, Colonel?
I think so, I mean, I I know that this has been a conversation going on for a while, started when I was still county, so. Um, trying to get there, it it is a grant, it's administered by the Business Oregon, and it's federal funds, um, they're making an application. Uh, nobody else reached out for a letter of support, um, if they had, there'd be more than one in your bucket. Because I think anybody who applied should have a chance to get the funds. Um, and P D T F, P D T Fast, that's a, no, it's a twister, um. Is successful in obtaining this grant and then deploying it, um, it could really be a positive outcome for the city of Boardman as far as getting broadband. Throughout the community, um, you know, it's a, it's a cost issue to get it to every home. Um, as we're doing these projects, going back to the capital group plan, we're trying to make sure we're communicating with utilities when we're doing these projects to get. To get that kind of stuff under the ground, um, in the utility easements, um, or or in the right of way, so. Um, it's just a real opportunity, I I hope they're successful, because I just see a little opportunity.
Now it's kind of above the ground, but.
And it's hit and miss, you know, yeah, you know, some people have, some people have a plug-in and some people have a dish, and, um, the plug-in can be a little more.
Running from a wire to the top of our appels, because we live in a weird spot, and so, yeah, it's. Just however you can get it.
Yeah.
Oh, I think it's great, man.
Better than anything else that was in town.
Yes.
Yes, it's really good, it's what I have.
I think the thing I like about this, because you can, I think. If this technology is constantly changing, you need to be ahead of the game, not behind.
Yes.
I think this is an opportunity for them to try and get ahead.
This takes the baby steps that have been made and gives us the opportunity to make a couple of little beats that we're.
So is that a signature that you want for me, right?
Yep.
So do we have a consensus for support?
Well, I move Mayor Peaper sign the letter and support.
Oh, is that?
Boardman, Boyman program.
I didn't think we had to have a motion.
Exactly that.
We do, we have a motion in a second.
And I think Boardman doing that broadband.
Okay.
All in favor, say aye, 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 any opposed? We have that. All right, Marta, you're a plan of action.
Um, yes, I, we just completed our, um, audit for last year, remember? Our auditors had requested an extension, which was through March thirty first, have that fund on the Sunday, until April first. So we just finished that up, and in the final, um, information that we received this morning. Um, we did have one fund, which was the garbage fund, um, that dipped over by two hundred fifty-seven dollars. Um, so that's the line that you have in front of you today, um, I needed approval by the governing body, um, signed by. The mayor or council president and our city manager, and I'll have to submit that to the organs of the state office division.
Well, I'm moving to approve the, or per question. I don't know, I don't have anything written.
Um, it's a plan of action, is what they call it.
Okay, so I move to approve the plan of action. For the city of Boardman. Accepting that.
I have a motion in a second, is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye, 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 any opposed? All right. All right, please report.
Um, since we have the, uh, staff the last month, um, February, the meeting fell down, April forty-eighth. Um, as you can see, um. I'm guessing if we have a full month, we're gonna be about over the last month, um, it's been a. Busy start of the year, just like it was last year, um. Apologize for not making the last meeting, I was out with surgery, um, I know when we had talks, uh, there was, uh, some questions about. Our stats from twenty-three to the year before. Um, and so I was just going to. Put out there, so in, uh, twenty-two, our total incidents were four thousand one hundred and twenty-eight. And in twenty-three, it was four thousand six hundred and thirty-seven, so about five hundred more. And remember, incidents are everything, um, the thing that we really look at is call service, so call service are the ones that somebody calls. For us versus us making a traffic stop or us contacting somebody on the road, um. So in two thousand twenty-two, we had twenty-five, two thousand five hundred and seventy-seven, and in twenty-three, we had two thousand six hundred and sixty-four. So about a hundred more. Which is about what we're seeing, I mean, every yearly, ten to ten round calls and. And take more cases, so.
Probably attributed to population.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, you know, you have a few hundred people, especially like when you have apartments, you know, you'll notice any time there's departments or. Trailer parks or anything like that, when you get a lot of people in there, now that tends to become a hotspot for activity. Which is what we have, I mean, the other thing I just wanted to, I'm sure somebody, I'm I'm sure if you haven't heard about it, you will. Uh, so I just wanted to let you know, we did have a, uh, incident this weekend. Um, one of our officers, Officer Wayne was out, he arrested a DUI. Um, put the suspect in the back of his patrol car that had another DUI, um. Hit the back of our patrol car. So Officer Wayne is fine, he was actually not in the car when it happened, um, he was up at the suspect vehicle, but. Uh, the the vehicle, uh, hit hard enough that it moved it by about fifteen to twenty feet and almost struck the car in front of it. And the suspect that was in the back of the car was transported to the hospital, last I heard, he was had minor injuries, uh, he was cited in the weeds. Um, the DUI that hit the patrol car, they wanted to estimate, they're gonna jail for multiple charges. So if you had heard that, it was your command, um, that happened, that would have been Saturday, early Saturday, normally about two, two o'clock, I think it was. But our officer is fine, uh, so we are down another vehicle.
I was gonna ask that, but I figured it would come in your court, so I didn't bring that up.
Yes, yes, so so we are down another vehicle.
So it's total?
I don't know, um, I looked at the damage, I went out yesterday morning, I looked at the damage. It's very similar to the two thousand sixteen, uh, when Lieutenant Pratt got hit, and they did not total it. This is a twenty-two, it's our, I mean, it's been in tourist for less than a year. So we'll see, uh, the damage is a little different, but it, uh. It pushed the actual forward, that may even.
Yeah, brain.
Well, we shall see. So, yeah. Yeah. Uh, you have any questions, I'm happy to ask anything.
Um, the only question I have, I I know there's a lot of positives of public transportation, but. From law enforcement side, is that something that is also a potential concern?
Well, it it's a concern, and just like anything else, is, uh, you know, large vehicles on the roads. Uh, concerning is some of the, you know, I I've never actually really worked and haven't. Honestly, they haven't contacted us to go over where the stops are, um, but just a quick glance, there's a few of those where the bus is falling over. You know, um, is is that gonna call it a restriction in traffic, um, I was glad to see that they. Did not try to go down Wilson during school hours, because that would be an absolute nightmare. I mean, then obviously the other thing is responding, you know, again, what was the large bus, thirty-four people?
Thirty-two people.
Thirty-two people, you get thirty-two people on a bus. And things could happen, and obviously that's going to, you know, have to have us respond to that, so.
Well, I drove the loop bus for about half a year, picking up kids at this, at Tamperman at the end of their school day. And took them to daycare every single day. And I don't know, I didn't seem to have any difficulty, but. They were school kids and they aren't free, I mean, the transportation's not free. You are gonna have no. If I, if I am a drug user and I want a ride to Hermiston, I get a free ride. It's not necessarily my grandma.
That would be connected from Idaho all the way to Boardman.
Yeah.
It's all the same thing, I'm I'm just saying, in the future, we may be hearing from law enforcement saying that they need additional. Just like additional officers.
Right, and and and, you know, unfortunately, we won't know that, and so, you see what the routes are, well, that was.
Right.
First time I seen that, well, Alex was yesterday. Um, so.
Yeah. I've been watching them do the drive-bys and.
Yeah.
Seen a lot of that.
I, yeah, I, you know, I, I think it's a great thing, I think it's the public transportation, I think we have a lot of belief for it, especially when you, you know, our workers out to our. Our plants and that, um, you know, the effect that it has on law enforcement is is to be seen, you know, so.
I think whenever you add something, if anything, you're gonna, you don't know until it happens, right? And so you just gotta be prepared for the best out of anything, yes.
Mayor Peaper, I I would add a little bit of that to that from the land use or the planning perspective, so. The city does have an adopted transportation system plan from two thousand and one. We do have a T P M grant, and we're gonna be updating that. Um, and we've identified that transit is an important part to talk about as part of that. I've asked the Loop to submit a couple of documents that have been. Completed over the past probably five years for the city to adopt as guidance documents, it's a regional transportation. Travel shed document that's done, the county's coordinated, oh, what's the title of this song, it's. It's basically to look at how transportation is coordinated through other services. Um, and then they have a plan specifically for their transit center and the Loop, um, the Loop that's in Boardman. And so hopefully, they they provided us the documents, and hopefully we get the letter asking us to adopt them. But we've identified internally that we don't know what bus stops will look like, we don't know where they will be, we don't know what the standards for how they should be developed will be. Um, and they've got a soft launch, so we know they're gonna have temporary bus stops, we know these things are gonna happen. But we don't have internally really a way to authorize these things, because we don't have anything in our. Land use planning documents or our T S P that really talks about transit, I mean, our current T S P talks about transit being Greyhound. And the Loop's, um, kind of curb to curb service, um, you know, what's always was referred to as the senior bus, the senior and stable bus. So, um, we've got a long way to go, I think, at facilitating this as well and having that internal conversation.
That's all I have, thank you.
You have a, Building Department report.
Uh, excuse me, I haven't had a chance to even live on my own board, I apologize, we got, I think it's about the same. But I did have an opportunity today to talk to a couple of guys from a company called Pro Homes of Tri-Cities. Their company bought the rest of the test, they bought all of what's left, we now own them. And we were talking about the process, and they're a high production builder. And the guy was telling me that once they get gone, they're probably gonna be submitting applications one a day. Until it's built out.
And this is where? I missed that, I think that part.
No, south. Or south, so lots of that they've already developed.
Okay.
They bought just that portion.
Gotcha.
The streets are all, the infrastructure's all in, all you have to do is.
Oh, gotcha. Oh, good, I don't.
Yeah, and so they're, they're, from what it sounds like. A world win company, they really look fast.
So they anticipate they're gonna sell them all?
I, I, yeah, I'm assuming they are.
I am the same, current, current interest rates.
They might go somewhere, yeah. So and the building, the houses they build are very comparable to what's already there, so it it's. We're, we're starting to wind up.
Any questions about building report? I do, since we're talking about that area, you have a street that you're talking about that already developed, and you know, they just bought. What's the name of that street?
I don't know yet.
Okay, thank you.
Is there one to?
There's an actual name.
It's been named, I mean, how you would have done this all like that?
Unity, Unity Land.
Well, I don't know, I'm talking about, George, you know, the one that goes through all the way to the south end of it, or down the, the one in the east west?
The one that was in the.
The east west, the right, parallel room.
So.
They had.
Luca's the middle man.
Yeah.
Well, there's, I remember, Luca comes up, it dead ends against Rome and then comes back, it's.
We named it, I mean, I, we went through a process because it was misnamed on the plat, and I know the council did that, and it was not long after I got here, so I don't remember.
If there's one, I don't remember what it is, but I thought there's.
Yeah, it is.
We had, there's two all the names.
Yeah.
But there's, there's no.
Yeah, there's no street signs on.
I think that, you think Google have that.
Well, no, we're not.
Yeah, they only, they're only, they're parents, grown parents.
Any other questions? Okay, I've been hearing that public work department. That'd be you, buddy.
Yeah. Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna say that Glenn, I read mine, but I didn't.
At least you read it.
Yeah.
I might be able to answer them.
Say what?
I said, so if you have any questions, I probably can answer them.
Oh, that's good. Anybody have any questions on public works, uh?
Sorry.
I was just gonna ask how it's going with putting in the meters that you have electronically.
So we have over half of them in, and the, the guy here, we did twenty-five, and we did seven today. And then in between, so.
Okay.
We're working on it.
We're working on it, okay.
Uh, I can add a little to that, um, we do have about four hundred sixty-seven, um, radios installed. That are being read, um, and the. The radio that we got and the software that we have reads them, they communicate about every four hours. And we have, uh, we just started using the software. Maybe two weeks out, when you and I got the trainings, implemented it and started, you know, working up the buzz with it. Um, and we have been able to already identify some where, um, somebody pulled out the radio reads. Um, on the meters, because, you know, maybe people was trying to shut off their water, um, so we got that notice that. um on the meters because, you know, maybe people were trying to shut off their water, um so we got that notice that it's not
So if you shut your water off, you will know.
Well, if you open your lid, it probably will disconnect.
Yes, when you open your lid.
So how do you, so you're not supposed to open your lid? We're we're supposed to call it.
That's city property.
But that was one of the topics, was to maybe reduce the cost of opening lids and that people would call the call the city instead of
My little tool I can't use anymore.
Well, you'll get caught.
Take care of when you lift the lid up.
You will get caught.
How do I know if I have a radio on it?
You, well, you'll see it on the lid.
It's on top of the lid.
Hey, but it's under and sticks through.
It's gonna be on the bottom of the lid?
Right now you have touchpad. The radio reader looks a little different, but it should look new.
Um and 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 a lot of these actually is one radio for two meters. So you're not only disconnecting, nor are you disconnecting your neighbors, um we get the alert for vocal then. Um if there's a continuous flow, we get that alert. And so again, we use those reports from the software, sent our public works out to go check the meters. Um those continuous flow ones really save money to the customer because if they have a break in whether they're pets or something, that's why there's that continuous flow, um and they won't get billed for you know, three weeks worth of extra water flow.
Less is on their side.
Less of the ones.
Well.
I know what you mean.
Um so again, we, the ones that are installed, we've been monitoring and we've already been able to identify and go fix some of those.
We've had several, several, especially after the weather warmed up. And a bad bit cold weather, they both five out homes that were boom, continuous flow, some really large continuous flows.
Well, it probably would be good, especially if you're spring push systems connected and on. You would have a leak that you might not not notice, yeah.
Uh, am I allowed to ask a question?
Yes.
So just pop a light, so um we've had a few, I don't know, I don't know exactly how many. I know some of the benches that are throughout town were built and possibly installed by Eagle Scout Stewie Products. I I believe that's the case, there's a couple, they think one over by the high school, um I know for sure. The bench that is in front of a small worker is pretty old. Um it's tilted.
Needs some attention.
And so what I'm asking is, is it, I think when we owned the hardware store, we might have asked, I can't remember if my parents asked who was responsible for the upkeep of that. Um but it's tilted because there used to be a couple of really bad trees that went through there, we had to cut it down, and they came under, the roots came up because it's, I mean, it's one of the older buildings in town, so um could we address that just to make it look more, yeah, like the same as some of the other, because the ones that were put in by the Eagle Scouts, they're they're nice. And so it would be nice to just, because I think at one time that was also a Greyhound bus stop, a long time.
It was.
It was, and so, I mean, it, that's probably how old that bench is. So anyways, I'm just bringing that up because it came to my mind now. Thank you.
I have a question for you. Uh so filling the ditch on rain and fog, what was the point behind that?
Well, the point behind that, the asphalt was getting undermined from where some of the vehicles went off there. And and so, and so consequently also stopped the vehicles going up, we're not done there, we still had to dress that up because of gravel on it, so.
Will there be guardrails there?
We might be putting some K around there. Like this like this right at corner, so nobody ends up on the sidewalk, the roads are slick. But probably not guardrails.
I always thought that was a weird, like that ditch being there was like, man, more people have that back to.
So we had several, not on the end it, but off the edge. And they had to get built correct to be getting back on the road, and then you go out and you add.
You got a few.
Yeah. That that's why we filled it in. And and we had, the dirt was getting dug out of our mild swell, so we didn't have to load it. And we got in, we had two other trucks helping us, so it went pretty quick and easy, but it's good timing.
Okay, I'm, it says lift station five and six repairs, troubleshooting public works, you want on troubleshooting or reservations. I thought we just did that.
We we had phase, we lost phase monitors, the phase monitors that monitor the phases coming in. That wouldn't, I would think, I guess it's electrical repair. But I always just place some phase monitor cubes.
Okay, so this isn't a big
Minor repair.
This is more just, okay, yeah, because I just couldn't figure out how I just paid somebody to do a lot of work in post.
Yeah, it could happen, brand new cube, I mean, it just happens, they go bad. It wasn't, we didn't lose a little phase or anything, it we just, just they chip bypass it.
Okay.
Get your pumps running again.
Well, I just wanted
Tell you that anyone to replace it.
Those guys were doing their jobs.
Oh, yeah.
That contract.
Yeah, no, yeah, no, they did their, it wasn't nothing, anything they didn't do, it was just, they were brand new, or not brand new, but
Okay, thanks.
Any other? All right, thank you, planning department.
So I'm just gonna sit, they said, I'm gonna sit this one. Um had a lot of activity lately about uh the use of shipping containers. And um we had um a a couple come in and make an application to use a shipping container in on their residential property. Um after a lot of internal discussion, I kind of about the history of shipping containers and the use, we did deny that. Um they were going to appeal that decision, and I said, you know, before you do that, will you just give us a little time to have an internal conversation? Because there's more than just this issue around shipping containers that uh that need to be addressed. Um this is not a final fix, what is before you tonight, this is really just getting your kind of support for a a policy direction on this, and then as we do work in both the development code and the municipal code, we need to codify this into an actual rule. Um but this would allow us to move forward with a couple of things, and again, some of this is not that the code would expressly um not allow or deny or or specifically allow the use of shipping containers. It's just a, it's just going down a road that we haven't gone before. So looking at the history, I, you know, I asked a bunch of people, you know, what what kind of has happened? And what I learned is they historically been denied in residential areas, although we know of at least one out there in a residential zone, and there's probably more. And maybe allowed in commercial industrial areas, but really with no standards around. So you get them, you know, they come in and they don't paint them, and they still have the 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 words on them when they were on the boat or on the train. Um you know, and they're just not attractive, they're kind of detractive to the neighborhood. And and so then we had also a request from somebody who has a business in Boardman, and they wanna do an upgrade. And some might say, well, how could moving into a shipping container be an upgrade? But if you go out and you look at what people are doing with shipping containers out there in the construction world, it's kind of impressive. Um and and talking with Glenn uh from a building permit perspective, there's not, I mean, it has to go through the building permit process, but there's nothing about a shipping container that says, nope, you can't use it.
No, actually, let me interrupt, there's section thirty-one fourteen that has very clear specific directions for how it would be designed. And there, I, chapter sixteen is the engineering section of the book, and it specifies exactly what app of chapter sixteen you gotta take. So it's very clear, very doable.
Yeah, and doable, I think that's the important part, it's it's doable. So I think you've had the memo, you've read it, I'm happy to answer any questions. But I think specifically kind of what I'm asking for is at the end of of the memo where I actually identify numbers one, two, and three. And and this is kind of opening a door. Um and I think it's a door that allows us to get creative in what we do, and because it's just a, it's a i- i- if we could also view this as an experiment, we could identify if it works or doesn't work. And as we actually get to adopting real code, we could say, nah, let's let's modify that a little bit, let's broaden this, let's narrow that, that kind of thing. But I'm I'm asking for you to say, okay, and I'm really surprised I'm doing this, have to say. I'm asking you to say, okay, there should be containers on residential property. But I'm doing that with some caveats, it says they have to be not visible from the street. Either by a fence or by vegetation or something, and it has to be painted so that it matches the house color. Um if they can't get to that, oh, oh, sorry, no, it's okay, I was gonna say, if they can't get to that, then we wouldn't authorize it.
What if it's being used as the home?
So that's what I was gonna ask.
So so let's let's cross that bridge when we get there, okay, okay? So um this request was specifically to use it as a storage shed. A a little up going and finding Hickory Shed or expanding a shop, this request was specifically for that activity. So I I took it a step further and I said, okay, the ones that have been placed on commercial and industrial property, which is placed, no permits were issued, and there's no standards, nobody said, oh, by the way, you need to paint it. Now, the one at the grocery store, the other day, I thought, well, one grocery store's been, it's gone. And then I drove by and went, no, it's not gone, it's still there, but it's painted and it blends in and you hardly, okay, maybe you get used to it, but you hardly notice it. But the one behind the um the the Mexican store that's on the side and it said sea land on it, oh, I don't know if it said sea land, but it said sea something on it, I've seen them on the road and they say sea land. So we've actually worked with them and said, hey, we need you to paint that, you know, we need to paint it a color that's complementary to the building. And and you know, so that it's not like sea land behind it. So that's the commercial part, and then kind of same standard in industrial zones, that we actually had that conversation about um yes, you do need a permit, it does need to meet the setback requirements, and if you do put wiring or plumbing in it, you'll have to go see Glenn. Just kind of clean that up so we have a a more delineated process, so um I think I've also in the shipping containers um authorized them as both an accessory use and any insulation shall conform to applicable, and then I said shipping containers proposed to be used for uses other than storage is authorized and would be subject to the applicable review process, that any other building proposed for that use would also be subject to, would also be subject to applicable building requirements. So that's authorizing the use that we we, the request we've had for our business in the commercial zone. I didn't get to houses because I think that's a big step at this point. Um again, I've been on the web, I've looked at some of the things they are doing out there with shipping containers. It is unique and intriguing, and in some cases very cost affordable. Um because you start with something that is reasonably acquired. And then you're you're doing a lot of stuff to make it habitable. Um but you're gonna spend those costs in a traditional home anyway, so um I didn't cross I'm not saying that we shouldn't have that conversation, because I think we need to figure out that affordability thing with homes. But I'm not sure what the appetite is for the community yet, I I I would like to take this with baby steps. And maybe it will get something in the commercial zone that's made out of storage container, and people can go, oh, that's unique, that's different, that's doable, and and get some buy-in and then move down that road a little further.
I I would say when you're looking at what they're doing, are they doing them in city limit residential areas, or are they doing them in town?
Mm-hmm.
They're doing them in city residential.
Yes, yes.
Because I believe I had read several, then probably last year, neighboring town got a tip with their city council because there was people that wanted to put them on the property to live
Yep.
in city limits.
Right, and I'm not, I'm not asking for any authorization about converting shipping containers at this point to a residential unit. But I will tell you that is happening out there, and they are pretty cool.
Well, I would be building codes.
Yeah, oh, yeah, absolutely, building, building ones.
As far as a shipping container in someone's backyard for storage, uh I'm gonna be the one that says absolutely not. I don't care where it's at, because
We have one at the
And that's and that's the thing, you have one at the high school, you know? Uh I I just don't think that's the way we wanna go, if somebody wants to be creative and build a building out of it, that's a whole different story. But if I want a shipping container to store my lawnmower and my motorcycle and my other things in my backyard or on the side of my house, I don't think that's what we want. I mean, we already have codes against people sleeping in in trailer trailers. And we know how well that works at times, so I I just think, and I, if we're gonna use storage, maybe we need to be very strict on how we do it upon approval. Maybe that's a way to be able to go it down. We want storage sheds, these are the str- these are gonna be the strict things that must happen. And I probably better not know that it's a storage shed, I don't know, I'm just brainstorming some ideas. That's just my first thought, not to say that it's final, that just came right, that's just curdating, yes.
I don't know if that even works anymore.
No, they're not working, she said.
All right, well, I actually, when I read this earlier, um I actually wrote a statement so that I wouldn't mess it up. So, uh upon careful review, the correspondence from Harlem County addressed Mayor Cooper regarding the utilization of shipping containers, I firmly oppose their use for purposes beyond storage. As we contemplate the future trajectory of Boardman, I envision a cohesive and aesthetically pleasing landscape devoid of contrasting array of shipping containers repurposed as accessory dwellings, businesses, or affordable housing. While I acknowledge the pressing need for affordable housing, I remain firm in my conviction that compromising the visual integrity of Boardman with such structures is not conducive to our long-term vision. Opting for a Hickory Shed presents more aesthetically pleasing choice when compared to a storage container.
I I'm gonna agree with that, I think you you it's a slippery slope, pretty soon everybody's gonna have one in their backyard. And and I'm not saying that as trying to be an elite con, I'm just saying, I don't, even if you paint them or whatever, I think the bare minimum's gonna happen, and they're not gonna be very aesthetic, and uh I, you know, I I'm totally open to, you know, uh different ideas on doing that or whatever, I just think the storage or the shipping containers, I don't know, I don't know if I can agree with right now, it doesn't mean I can't have my mind changed, I think right now, I don't think it's a good idea.
I I would, I would share a couple of things, again, at the end of the day, I ask for your decision, and it's your decision that we will implement. Um so in having the conversations with folks and and you, if somebody wanted to invoke Hickory Sheds, um what I will tell you is that if the Hickory Shed is over two hundred square feet, which for most people can get to a reasonable size to store things, they're gonna spend several thousand dollars for that Hickory Shed. And because it's over two hundred square feet, they're gonna have to get building permits. And when they come in and get the building permit, they're gonna go back to the Hickory Shed people and say, I need the engineer drawings. And Hickory Shed's gonna charge them another two or three thousand dollars for the engineer drawings. So by the time you go through the process to cite the Hickory Shed, then again, I'm not saying this because I want you to make the decision for the storage, for the shipping containers, I'm not, but I want you to share, I want you to understand kind of what the conversation we're having with the person who's coming in and making this request. And it's not just the one person who's asked, it's it's everybody. When they go through down that road with Hickory Shed, or they have to anchor it, they don't have to anchor this the shipping container. They have to get the engineer drawings, they don't have to get the, I mean, it's it's, so by the time you go through the storage, the shipping container process and say, by the way, I want you to paint it, you know, maybe we could talk about a faux roof. I mean, there, maybe there's other things we could do to say, can you get to yes with the shipping container? Because the cost on the Hickory Shed, well, maybe more aesthetically pleasing, is six to ten times the cost. It it's just that it's an affordability factor. Which means their stuff is sitting out and visible and also nice looking.
So I I'd like to share something from my own experience is that would probably be the case with the Hickory Shed. But you can get engineered plans for free on the internet and build it yourself are way cheaper, which I did myself. When we moved into our house.
If if you build a shed to prescriptive code, you don't need an engineered plan, but these Hickory Sheds and these pre-manufactured sheds um like clearly, you know, is that, is that right?
Clearly.
Clearly, they're not built to any code whatsoever.
Well, what I'm, what I'm getting at is that there are options besides this, is I guess is what I'm saying.
Yes.
You know, I'm just using my own example of why I chose to build it myself, because I could, and it was cheaper and didn't have to get all those, all the stuff that you're talking about.
I didn't even have to get a permit, because I stayed right at two hundred square feet, and I didn't have over ten continuous feet height. So my my shed is gorgeous. Now, I built it myself, just
Thanks.
But I I get what you're saying, I just think that I think we're, we're stuck on what it, what. Shipping container looks like when it's in cargo mode versus what it looks like in reality if you modify it. And they have a, a whole place up on the Baptist Church property outside of Starkey where that. Vacation homes are two shipping containers connected and they're like little miniature homes. And I, when I was in Lido County, people had three and four of them shaped into U shapes. They had little courtyards and their home was this. One shipping container connected to the next all the way around, they did, they were gorgeous.
Were they city limits or county?
Well, when you're in Lido County.
It's probably county.
It's all.
Well, that's what I'm getting at.
Because Bryanville's the only place that comes with a planning director and a citation and they don't come to town.
Sure.
So I just feel like, um.
After.
They're, they're not as awful as you might envision initially.
I find it a little bit interesting when you bring up the fact that the store across the street over here. Because we have one over there, they removed one. And apparently decided, well, now they need more storage again and brought another one in.
They're adding, they're also adding on um, a freezer, um, a freezer unit and, and exterior freezer unit. So that prompted a, a, a review. And so we were able to have the conversation about the storage container, we asked them to paint the storage container.
Personally, I, I agree with the conversation here, I don't think residential is, most lots are not. Big enough probably lengthwise unless you bought the really pretty small ones, container. And I, I think we have worked really hard to try to. Move Boardman's. Visual and our reputation and how we feel about ourselves up a, a step or two. And uh. Yeah, I, I can see commercial and industrial because they're in a different section of the community and they, if you have a requirement that they paint them to match. Whatever and that, that would be fine, but I think, and I think it would be a headache for. Holding people because people are gonna wanna put them on a smaller lot than they really have. You know, I mean, you, you, we'll, ten feet is nothing. But if I have a pretty small lot. On the north side of town is probably the only place you could put containers.
Because the yards are set up to.
Yes, they're all big, our lots, yeah. And over on the south side, our lots are all smaller, so you'd have a hard time, so I, I agree with it. And I wasn't quite sure what you were saying about what you were asking us for because you. I couldn't find where you, you weren't reading, but you.
Yeah, so on bottom of page two, top of page three, um, I've got three number items. And that's really the, that's really the policy statement or that the standards that I would, would want to apply. I'm hearing you loud and clear, the answer is no in a residential zone, I, unless somebody wants to.
I don't think the council is in, is uh, in agreement that residential is probably the best way we want to go right now. But as far as commercial, I think we could make some, there should, could probably do that.
So I think there's two requests, um, that hopefully the first half of number two and number three on that list. It's really about the use of a storage, a shipping container for storage purposes in either a commercial or an industrial zone. And what I wanna do is say, look, you can continue to use them, but you gotta get a development permit and you gotta paint them. I mean, I'd really like to be able to have that conversation with those folks and say. We're, we're not gonna take the ride away, but we, we just want you to do a little bit more around it. We wanna make sure even with that kind of installation that you're meeting setback requirements, those types of things. Um, and then um, the second half of number two. Gets into using that shipping container for use other than storage to actually have a business. Develop that, that shipping container so that they could use it as a drive-through opportunity.
A drive-through opportunity?
Mm-hmm, I just think we're setting ourselves up for a precedent that we don't wanna get started.
I, I think I agree with that, like I said, I think. I just, I could see it popping up everywhere very quickly. And I don't know if I'd like that.
I think one thing that Richard said earlier is just, um. It doesn't mean that my mind can't be changed, but right now I think I would need further information. I'd like to do a little bit more research before, um, saying yes to that.
Good.
Okay, well, and I think. For somebody, I guess in your position that would give them the okay. You'd really have to know what. How they intended to do this, you know what I'm saying? It's, it's like when they took the Hickory Shed and made it into the coffee place. Okay, mine, Hick, Hick, the Hickory Shed was the easy part.
Right.
And then putting the plumbing and all that in it was very difficult.
Yeah.
Had they probably understood how difficult it would have been, they would have done something different.
Mm-hmm.
Like build it to begin with.
Right.
So. Is that, is that? Is that, is that part of your job is to make people bring you the plans and. Somebody looks at them and says, yes, that's a safe installation and, yeah. And this happens when it comes to me.
Yeah, and it would be, I mean, we'd be looking at it from the perspective of can they meet the requirements of the development code. Glenn would be looking at it from the perspective of can I get it there from the building code perspective.
And see, obviously the hardest thing that anybody in the container, the hardest code is energy conservation. I don't know how they're gonna do that.
Those are not designed to be that way, they would have to do a lot of modifications.
You're gonna lose, you're gonna lose eighteen inches in the ceiling and probably. Twelve inches in the walls for insulation.
And those things are not very tall.
If they raise it up, I mean, they're already eight, eight feet wide. They're not gonna be seven feet wide, it's the insulation requirement. And steel separation for um, condensation, that's gonna have to be addressed, there's a lot of things that's gonna be very difficult.
Where does the health department come in to a situation like that?
Only if they're making it so that food be prepared.
Right, and they still have to meet all of their standards, I mean, like any other, any other restaurant or if, if they're serving food, they're gonna have to meet those. Unit City County, um, Public Health Department requirements.
Just as uh, ice is also considered food.
Yeah, yes.
I guess.
Yeah, so the Hawaiian shaved ice businesses have to go through the thing.
All the shops have to go through this.
Yeah, yeah.
So can, can we table this until we get some more information, is that what we're looking at now or?
I, I, for me, I, 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 I don't, I, I don't agree to shipping containers in the city.
But I think we wanna get clarity, right? Because right now.
Clarity is for what?
Correct. Clarity is like the expectations, like, hey, they are not allowed in residential.
If you want shipping containers in, in the city, I think then we probably better have more, more information on codes, no?
No, I'm saying that we would say no shipping containers within residential areas.
That's where I'm at.
These are the expectations for, for a commercial.
I, I, I am definitely against having them in a residential.
As of right now.
Yeah, so I mean, that's what we're saying, we just need some direction of.
Correct, as far as, yeah.
Clarity.
So I've seen most of the heads go up and down, I think there's a lot of consensus around, we just don't want them in residential zones.
As of right now, I would say yes.
Okay, and then on the commercial and industrial, what I'm really looking for is just your support in saying, look, going forward. You're gonna have to get a permit, you have to meet setback requirements and you gotta paint the darn things.
I think I.
Only for storage. And only for storage, yes, yes, the, the use would not change, the use has been for storage and I wouldn't propose to change things.
I think I'm okay with the, that second part, the commercial and industrial, I just, obviously the residential, I'm.
And they're here, I mean, the reality is that they're here, that they've been allowed in, in those two zones.
All right.
Yes, and clarity.
Yeah. Okay, well, when we get to the point where we're actually working on the code and making changes to it, we'll come back and revisit this. I, I really appreciate your time tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Fern.
Team manager, report. Thank you, hey, just real quick, um, just kudos to the staff, um, they really. Just smart, I, I mean, we are not the biggest town. And it's crazy to think that the amount of experience that we have within our team. Within the size of our town is extremely unique. And then it should be on the experience too, they're just, they just know their jobs, so just kudos to our staff. Um, along with the staff, so we are going to be looking at the ordinances. That have fees directly connected to the ordinances and fees directly connected to resolutions, we want to extrapolate.
Extract.
We wanna take them out and put them all in one fee schedule. Okay, and I will present something to you in June. Right, okay, um. The other thing is please finish your SEI, you don't wanna be fined three times, um.
We haven't talked about people. Yes, that's correct, what, tag day?
Yeah.
I had a question, so the video, the videos you sent us. Did anybody else have any issue doing the very last one? The test will, the test will not come up, but I had to watch that video three times to figure that out.
It's very long, fast forward.
No, but the point was, was at, at the end, I, at the end, you're supposed to do a test to finalize it and it would not bring it up. So I just left it, it's, I, I couldn't get it to work.
I didn't get that far.
So, what I'm saying is I finished, except for that test, so technically I have not finished.
I know, that's lost it.
So, sorry.
There was never any.
Safe schools. I've watched so many videos this year.
Yes, blah, 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 blah.
Now, Patty Foleo is more advanced than that.
The thing I like about it, they were, they just, you could click play. And you could just listen, it wasn't like save schools or the coaching one where you've gotta click play. Wait fifteen seconds, click play again and you do that for eight hours straight.
Or where you play it and then it plays for two minutes and then you have to answer a question and then you have to play it for another two minutes.
And then wait again and then answer that question again.
Thank you, Mr. Hammond.
Oh, gosh, Sharon.
Hey, um, the next thing is on there, and good thing Chief is here. Um, I said thank you to Amanda for helping put like compile and, and reformat this O, OSHA manual. Along with a safety manual and I'm so sorry that I did not mention Chief, Chief made the safety manual. So that is the kudos, it really would not have happened without him, so thank you, Chief. Um.
He just woke up.
Uh, I'm working on a recycling plan. That hopefully April, April tenth, that we will have a pretty clear idea of what we are doing here in Boardman moving forward and. We're getting to that.
When you recall, when you talk about recycling, what do you mean?
Recycle, so the city has, is more of education, uh, we're gonna have two recycling centers.
That's what you're talking about, recycling centers.
Yeah, we're not talking about, not bins yet, that is due.
That's coming.
It is coming, and now.
And that's gonna raise our garbage bill and, and, and the company that picks up our garbage gets the recycle money for picking it up.
To, to pay for all the, to pay for all the bins, they'll get money, to pay for the trucks, they'll get money.
To put in a sorting center.
Correct, they'll get money for that, but we would, we would be paying, our rates would increase to pay for each truck itself, I believe. And that can be a conversation next month.
Okay.
Okay, um, so again, I'm gonna, yep, I'm gonna present that. Uh, the other thing is I really would like to move forward with the logo concept. Did, and I have talked to a peer group, is there anything of the logos that stand out? Christina and I are simpatico, I love the simplicity concept, I.
The what?
Which one, the number one?
Sympatico.
Sympatico.
Do you want the primary logo?
I don't know why you don't use the one that you're using all the time on the website. That's funny, that was a, that was a placeholder that I gave the website company. I know, but you should use it.
I don't like that one.
Because it's simple and it, it, I can't remember why, I can't remember.
Which one are you?
I'm talking more of like on page a hundred, it says one hundred, City of Oregon, right, so Christina, I think that's it.
To like the same thing.
Are you thinking that somebody's gonna repaint that logo on the water tower? So I was told, we don't wash that, it looks so dirty.
Huh?
It looks so dirty and we can't wash it.
I do that.
So some.
I do too. This one's my favorite, I like this one.
I know.
Which one's that?
Here's the one he's using all the time.
I know, but I don't like.
The page one and two.
That looks like, that looks like a logo from middle.
I like ninety-six. I like page ninety-six.
If you guys would just, again, oh, no, you don't want that.
I do want it. I want the one on ninety-six.
Just a small, well, just, you know, you don't want something like that.
What, what don't I want about it?
So before, just to pull you guys back. A, a thought would be that glass would just be glass. Mayor Keever had a really fun idea that we would auction off that middle piece of glass to anyone who would like to purchase it.
Karen Watson.
Music, Karen.
Last year because of that.
That's actually a good idea, thought, not off, because somebody would probably want it.
I would think that'd be fun, but it would be just clear. And then in that portion, we would just do City of Boardman, no, not.
That way we never have to train it again.
And I don't know, I, I can't remember what the conference feedback I get, City Boardman established. We do that too, I know there were some conversations that I don't do establish, but I can't remember who. But you're, you're sticking with twenty-one, so. So do the, so that, that would be the thought, City Boardman established, yeah. Anyway.
Maybe my face would be look pretty.
I think we could have a portrait of myself up there.
It would have hurt bad somewhere.
Well, we get a good perk for why. Anyway, that's about, that's all I have.
That's all your knowledge.
You didn't want to talk about number four? You know the thing.
Number?
Is that Facebook?
Karen mentioned number four.
What, what?
Did you want, did you want her to talk about number four?
Where's number four?
Facebook? Facebook, thank you. I thought you mentioned number four.
Oh, oh.
I think she's talking about the logo, oh, logo number four, yeah.
And even the Facebook is, uh, we just don't have a link on the website, but it's, it's there, you cannot message, you cannot comment, it is simply.
Displayed information.
Yeah, display information. Um, and just along with the website and the loop, we do have in our community section, a link that has loop goes directly to there as well, so.
So the, and I, I will say, um, because of the simplicity, is when you're doing anything on paper, it doesn't matter. Um, but on clothing, the like the tote bags, the examples that you kind of gave, the more colors that you use, um, and the more. The more that there is, the cost is gonna be higher.
Did you use a lot more?
Something that's harder to distinguish.
Correct. Right, and then it, it will impact like what color shirt you can, you can pick or fabric or whatnot, so just. When it's a little bit simpler, it's easier to create.
Okay.
But.
Yes.
Number one, what does it mean up there?
So, uh, uh, April twenty-second is, uh. Earth Day, what's the other word?
I called it Earth Day.
Arbor Day.
Okay.
So we, um, those individuals, the, this group right here have all participated, we have. They have assignments to go out, we're gonna get gloves and garbage bag to provide.
So we're starting this up again.
So the thought is.
Becoming more.
Yeah.
Because we did, it was really a big thing pre-COVID.
Yes.
Correct, so the thought is now, it's not like, hey, we're blasting this out, this is a community, I, I felt it was too late to do that. But next year, I would like to do a community event or is it clean up day and then we do some kind of, hey, let's come over and have ice cream. Not moving that, but I just didn't wanna do it all.
Does it, does it have to be once a year? I mean, the reason why I ask that is because we do live in the windiest city in the universe. And just to somebody that has a business that looks across an open area or whatever like. And just as somebody that has a business that looks across an open area or whatever, like. I remember when they came out there and did all the work or whatever and it only took a few months and it looked exactly the same because of the wind.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, no, it does not have to be once a year.
Just, I would consider maybe trying to organize it for one. This is just my opinion on. Winter months make it a little difficult, but maybe quarterly or. Every four months, something.
Or maybe it would be three that month.
Just just because the the wind blows so bad or like the garden, it's just, it doesn't fall.
It's it's pretty, and we are going on the the freeway side on this one, and that's pretty like extensive to sign out direct districts taking. Charge of that, but it really. Giving your insurance is that is a big deal. But yeah, we certainly can do it, more or less.
One more question for you.
Yeah.
So free down.
Uh sorry.
Sorry. I think it's free go two month, right?
Yeah, April, May.
April, May, let's go.
So and I put that in there. I will give feedback. I am I am asking uh Jose to look at. Beginning of April, end of May, what was the impact? What is our cost? So I I will share that after we're done.
Is it, is there any way we can find out how many? Cities to that, maybe just in Eastern Oregon that offer that?
That free dump?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I can find that out.
I just, I think that would be good information because if we're very unique to that bit, that's probably worth sharing, in my opinion.
I want it every month.
We don't, Kelly does it every day.
They do?
Yeah, because you can dump it for free.
Free dumping, oh, okay.
Yeah, you can dump in a little town called Marquinhos too.
If you're ready, then go.
You you got free dumping, wow. That's it.
Yep.
Yeah. I would just say the only issue is somebody that's utilizing program is that it gets full very quickly.
Well, Saturday morning, Thursday afternoon.
And you definitely need to watch your tires. Because you will get a flat at some point. If you learn that, just because that's it's just their stuff. Not everywhere, but stuff does fall down.
Wow, and.
So when it gets full, it's a nice thing to, it it's at least being utilized, which is nice.
Yeah.
That's that and it just kind of is hard when. You know, you go on Sunday and it's full.
Yeah.
And you can't drop your stuff.
And they're not, yeah, and they're not gonna come and.
No.
Change anything out at that point.
But you know, that's something we can work with that that agency to say, hey, they're gonna see that they're gonna be able to gauge on how much it is. And then we put a lot of pressure on to help them keep that.
Yeah, and Ralph and I can work on that. And and Tony and I have called when that recycling is like, hey, this is, we need to have an oversight. So we just needed to communicate.
So I got a question too about that. So I know that's a city thing. What is stopping us from doing the nine seven eight one eight zip code? Is it because they live outside of the county or outside of the city?
They don't pay their.
They don't pay them. Okay, that's, I'm just asking. So, okay, thank you.
Anything else on the, for the city manager report?
No.
Any question, any questions? I didn't mean, not you. Didn't mean that. All right, council comments.
Oh, I have one. It's mostly a question that came up from somebody. I know. The offerings are not necessarily in our control because of state stuff, but. When people are getting up work and there's that mad rush from three to four, whatever that is, or whatever, and you're trying to come mostly come into Boardman. Um the ongoing issue of just so many people just, I don't know. It it's weird to describe. I I've been to some big cities that. You know, they they like Boston, for instance, went there and there was four lanes, but really there were seven lanes because they just made their own lanes. And nobody cared. And it was like watching ants move. I think we're starting to get that a little bit of an effect, especially on the main street. Like somebody sent us some pictures and it was like, and I could see it. Like it's just feeling, and nobody, like, they'll just blow right by you. If you're next in line, nope, I'm going around you and it's just doo, 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 doo. And so. There there was a ask for maybe maybe a police presence and just kind of just remind people. Hey, these are our traffic laws. This is how this is set up. Please be mindful, sort of.
Well, the only thing that works is like on those is you can't have two cars. Like if somebody's making a left turn and a car come up right.
Yep.
But you're not supposed to be stacking of them.
Yeah, and I think what the issue was, was like somebody was waiting and then people just went swoop right by him and got ahead of him.
And I will say, if you're trying to make a left turn and the only off ramp I know about is one coming in from Houston.
Mm-hmm.
If you're trying to make a left turn to go across the bridge and somebody pulls up on the right, you can't see if there's traffic coming. So then you're stuck there until that person gets to it.
Very good, right.
I don't think it actually matters.
Until with, if you're turning left and you gotta, if another big rig gets there, it's a little hard. If you got a small rig and. And a bigger truck comes next to you, you're gonna have a hard time because.
Anyways, I just thought I'd answer that. That's all.
Invest in a bigger rig. We live in Markham. The last thing, uh is there any other things for council comments?
I really love how clean the streets look.
So you have a comment?
I did, I just need it.
The last.
They did, they look very nice.
Anything else you'd like to add? Uh we need to choose a city committee member uh for the ambulance service provider with the ASA. Not, I shouldn't say ASA, with the count, with the county to talk about the preliminary. Or the service providers. Coming out with the specific.
Just, yeah, just to be on the community.
The first step.
Yeah.
The first step. Brenda Prophet's the only one that reached out asking to be on that unless anyone else wants to be on it. I was going to. Uh assign her that opportunity unless somebody else wants to challenge her, fight her, take it away from her.
They just need one.
It is one, unfortunately.
And it can't be a fire person.
They had certain requirements, something.
Do you have the requirements one?
Uh do you, do I have a requirement? I do know that you can't be, you can't. I don't have it in front of me, but I knew the one was you can't work for, you can't for the fire department or the ambulance or can't be associated with it. Yeah, so it has, they were looking for a neutral person. So that totally eliminated me as well. As a volunteer, so. Um Brenda has really liked, so I thought I would.
I would like to do it. Thanks.
So anybody have any uh?
You're a Phil.
Anybody have any objections of uh Mrs. Prophet? Okay, it's yours. So Matt Jensen, you and Matt Jensen will reach out on the. Also, the last thing is you got an email about the L C conference in uh October. So if that's interested you, if there's more than four that go, how do we deal with that? So if there's a four, that means there's a corn.
Only if we're talking business and.
I don't think it counts.
You don't think that counts? So if we, so. If you're, so we're shooting, we're shooting a breeze and there's four of us, we're talking, we're four.
But we're not talking city business, right?
So you have to make sure you're not talking city business.
I think, I think where it would be an issue is that you couldn't confirm that you were not talking city business because that can potentially come up too.
Guys, that was just a. Okay, having nothing else, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, Brenda, for making the meeting go even longer than it did.